Stand for the pledge. At this time, I'd like to introduce Jessup VFW Post 5544 to come up to the microphone. They're at 205 Dulph Street, Jessup, PA. We have Russell Cannavaro, he served the United States Army with a tour in Vietnam. Steve Jakowitz, Marine veteran, toured Vietnam. John Jerome, Army veteran, served a tour in Vietnam. John Ritzko, Marine veteran, has served in Vietnam. And John, and Bill Littlejohn, Army veteran with an overseas tour. Gentlemen, thank you for your service. The floor is yours.
We're all rise. Comrades, brothers and sisters, standing facing the flag of our country, present arms. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two.
Ladies and gentlemen, will everyone please stand for a moment of silence before citizens that lost their lives in California and the county of Tahoma. So our thoughts and prayers are with their families and their friends and with them in their time of need. Um, we just hope that this type of situation just never happens again. Thank you. I'd like to thank Dave Han and his staff for having us this evening. Last night, they had a active shooter seminar here and it was videoed on ECTV, so everyone will be able to see it. They'll be able to see it on a Lackawanna County website. You know, with all these shootings and these situations going on churches and movie theaters and shopping markets, you name it, as close as Wyoming County, we're just trying to give our citizens an opportunity to be a little safer, to realize if they hear gunshots what to do. And it's scary that we even have to try to prepare people for this, but this is the world that we're in and we just want to try to make people as safe as they possibly could be. At this time, I'd like to bring the Wednesday, November 15, 2017 Board of Commissioners meeting at 6:00 PM in Emergency Services Building at 30 Valley View Drive, Jessup, to order. I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the reading in the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. We're gonna bypass our proclamation presentation for small businesses. We're gonna go right to opportunity for the public to address the board. Anybody in the public that would like to address the board on agenda items only? Okay. Go right into Resolutions 17-0292, approving current payables.
Approving current payables. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables. From Lackawanna County General Fund, numbers 252656 to 253501 inclusive, totaling $1,364,366.1 electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $5,835,203.63.
Does the board have any questions at this time? I'd like to make a motion approving current payables. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. 17-0278.
This is authorizing the counties to obtain blanket bonds or crime insurance to satisfy public officials bonding requirements, whereas on November 23, 21, Act 106 became effective immediately authorizing counties to obtain blanket bonds, whereas pursuant to subsection 1130 of the Act, which requires the county commissioners as a governing board of the county to establish procedure, whereas section, subsection 1130B of the Act permits the county to instruct their risk manager to compile and submit this information and determine the amount of the bond, whereas section 1129 of the Act requires the form of a blanket bond or crime insurance obtained in compliance with the Act shall be approved by the county after review by the county solicitor in consultation with the county risk manager. Be it resolved therefore, the county shall hereby adopt the following procedure for compliance with provisions of Pennsylvania Act 106. County risk manager is hereby designated to submit information to the Board of Commissioners prior to the close of every calendar year, as the amount of security the risk manager recommends the county maintain during the succeeding year. In the course of performing duties assigned under one above, the county's risk manager shall confer with county solicitor to determine the form and content of the blanket bond. The insurance will comply under provisions of this Act. County risk manager will obtain competitive proposals for the designated broker of record. Upon receipt and review of competitive proposals from the county's designated broker of record at least two weeks prior to close of each year, county risk managers shall present to the board for its consideration and approval, form an amount of required security together with the recommendations that meet the bond insurance on required in this Act. And Mr. Rick Jones, the county's risk manager, is here to answer any questions on this resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Rick.
Good evening, Commissioners. For your consideration this evening, is Resolution 17-278 authorizing the county to obtain a blanket bond to satisfy the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's public officials bonding requirements in order to remain in compliance with Act 106 of 2011. Act 106 allows counties in Pennsylvania to purchase a blanket public officials bond and crime policy with faithful performance of duties endorsement to provide coverage for the county's elected and appointed officials. The lone exception to Act 106 is the county treasurer, who by state statute must obtain and provide evidence of a separate public officials bond to the Commonwealth each year. Prior to Act 106 taking effect on November 23, 2011, Lackawanna County had a blanket employee dishonesty bond and crime insurance policy with a $1 million limit, but that policy excluded county public officials who were required at that time to post individual public official bonds with minimal limits. For example, prior to 2011, the state only required county commissioners to carry and post a $7,500 bond despite the range of their duties. As required by Act 106 and in consultation with the county solicitor, Lackawanna County has annually obtained and posted a $2 million blanket crime and public officials bond, including faithful performance of duties endorsement, beginning January 1, 2012, and annually thereafter. As the county's risk manager, working with the county's broker of record and the county solicitor, I recommend that the county renew its current $2 million blanket crime and public officials bond, including faithful performance of duties endorsement, effective January 1, 2018. The proposed annual renewal premium remains at $4,651, the same premium we have paid for this coverage in 2016 and 2017. Also, please be advised that the county's 2018 blanket crime and public officials bond will now cover the newly elected district attorney, who will take office in January of 2018. Today, with your approval of Resolution 17-278, Lackawanna County will remain, or continue to remain in compliance with Act 106. Any questions?
Why did we have to add the DA?
All public officials, with the exception of the county treasurer, are included in this bond, so as-
Just because he's-
As public officials change-
Got it.
No one comes-
The new ones come on and the previous ones go off.
Come off.
Bond. So Shane Scanlon will come off and Mark Powell will go on as of January 1.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the county to obtain a blanket bond for crime insurance and safety public official bonding requirements. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna go back to, uh, to our Small Business Spotlight. Commissioner Cummings.
Uh, George, is that-
Yes.
Hi, George. Glad to have you here. You're representing St. George's Family Restaurant.
Thank you.
Tell us a little bit about your business.
I used to drive by every day. I worked up on the highway. Every Sunday, I'd be driving to my mother's and I'd see the sign for sale, for sale. I was in the restaurant business, so 28 years now, I think you're better. You have the, I don't even, I think it's 28, around there.
So you started off as a dishwasher?
Oh, yeah.
Worked your way up and then bought your building and-
Route 6 Parish Steiner. That was, that was the first restaurant on Route 6.
Wow. And you're, 85 cents an hour, it says you got paid.
Oh, who taught you all this?
We happen to have a really good friend, friend, yeah.
Who taught you all this, yeah? That's the truth.
Yeah, so, um, and then you just have been open ever since then? And tonight, it looks like it's pasta night. All you can eat pasta night for $6?
Pasta night.
Awesome.
It's like five different sauces and three different pastas.
Do you cook, George, or?
Well, if I have to now.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I have the kids, my son-in-law and my daughter's running it.
So your family's taking over as well?
They took it over.
See, and that's what it's all about. That's what I love, and that's why I love when, when you come in and we have the small businesses come in and show how we, a family starts a restaurant or any type of business and then the younger generation takes over and it grows from there or just remains an icon.
I didn't like school.
What's that?
I didn't like school.
You're doing good business.
Not everyone needs to go to college to survive in this world, and I think that, um, you know, people like yourself that are an inspiration to others that are working out there, you know, for whatever the rate is, yours was 85 cents an hour, um, you know, washing dishes, thinking that that's their life, that's not their life. They always can aspire to be something more and create their own way throughout this world, and you're living proof of that, and you have raised your family on your dream and your work.
I have six children.
That's, that's an amazing story, and those are the type of stories I like to get out into the public so that people are aware of the fact that they're, in America, you are, you can do whatever your dream is, as long as you work hard, you can get wherever you'd like to be in this world.
Lot of hours.
Yeah, and I appreciate your story, so thank you so much for all that you've done and what you continue to do in your family as well. I thank them.
Okay, I'm sorry I was late.
No worries, no worries.
Do Eagles fans get a discount? Do Eagles fans get a discount?
Oh, definitely.
He's an Eagles fan.
For the first year, in a long time, you could come to you.
Eight and one, we all know it.
Thank you very much.
Stay right there. Commissioner O'Carroll.
You were probably late because you were probably still working.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, it's a great story. You're an inspiration to all of us, so I understand it very well, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George, uh, I've been to your restaurant numerous times. My Uncle Junior Santorelli, who passed away years ago, used to love when you had pasta night. He used to come, love to come over.
Oh, yeah. I can remember.
Your, uh, your business is, is on Main Street in Jessup, it's the, you know, and during the race for the Saints. Talk about that day. How, how's your business during the weekend?
That's why I named it St. George's, because I'm George and I figure, well, I'm not Italian, but didn't matter. I was raised without Italians.
Well, there's a lot of people who run for St. George and aren't Italian. I ran for St. George, I'm not Italian.
I was raised with them all. Vito Geraldo, he was a judge now. John Scalotti, well, he passed away, and there's a bunch of them that I was friends with. They all went to prep, I didn't go there.
You did, you did great.
Well, you did good for yourself.
So I know you know all your customers, plus you have some, you're a part-time worker still, that work there?
Yes, yes.
Because you go to be part-time, so he provides for a lot of people in there. It's very helpful.
That's great.
And the restaurant is right, like I said, the race course for the Race for the Saints, it's at, your restaurant is basically at the turnaround point before they go back up the hill.
Nice.
Yeah, so, yeah, he's right.
That's the best day of the year, every year. Long as they keep it going.
She's got 20-some thousand people on Main Street, Jessup, and what's, what's funny about it, George, isn't it? They move with the race as the race progresses, because they'll do like a, they'll do like a, like a one block and then they'll stop, and then they'll regroup, and then they'll do another block, and as that's going on, the crowd moves, 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 all the way down.
Back up to the stadium.
Yeah, and then back up to the stadium.
Wow.
But your restaurant's fabulous, and the people in the area love it, and we want to make sure, because we're up in Jessup, we're up at the emergency services, we want to bring a business in, and we thought nothing better than St. George's, so thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Thank you for what your family does, and thank you to your children, they're taking over your legacy.
Yeah.
Yes, they are.
Commissioner Cummings?
So, George, today we have a certificate of recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize St. George's Family Restaurant in honor of achieving the designation of a small business spotlighted in Lackawanna County, given this 15th day of November 2017 by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Gianni O'Carroll and myself, Commissioner Cummings. Come on up, we'll get a picture.
Good job, George. And good, good luck with the team this year, so.
Oh, yeah.
And Andy, and Andy's a big Eagles fan, oh. We got a big one, we got a big one Monday.
It's been rough.
A big one Sunday night with the Cowboys.
Cowboys, and then the end of the year season, the Cowboys win.
That's always a fight.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
I don't know how you found out about that, he, I couldn't find out.
She phoned off that, that's the one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Congratulations, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Have a good night.
Take care.
Thank you. Thank you.
Approving a hazardous materials response fund grant. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, is hereby accept the hazardous materials response fund grant from the Department of Emergency Management, in the amount of $16,384.61, commence July 1, 2017, expire on June 30, 2018. We have Richard Barboli, the Deputy Director of Emergency Management, here to explain the agreement.
Evening Commissioners. This grant is in support of our hazardous materials response plan within the county. It's a great asset to us, it eliminates any county funds from supporting this, this program, and it strictly comes from there.
Does the board have any questions for Rich? I'd like to make a motion approving the hazardous materials respond fund. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes, thanks, Rich. 17-0280.
Approving an emergency management performance grant. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, is hereby approve and authorize grant submission by Lackawanna County to Pennsylvania Emergency Management, PIMA for federal fiscal year 2017, for a performance grant in the amount of $40,487. And again, Mr. Barboli is here to answer any questions.
Commissioners, this grant is reimbursement for 50% of the emergency management coordinator's salary and benefits for the year.
Does the board have any questions?
That's not a new position though, correct?
No, no, that's an existing position.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion approving emergency management performance grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes, thanks, Rich. 17-0281.
Tower lease agreement. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, hereby enters into a lease agreement with Microwave Rental LLC on behalf of Lackawanna County Department of Emergency Services, for tower facility located in ransom township for initial term of five years from October 1, 2017. It will cost $1,150 a month, and we're pleased to have our Director of Emergency Services, Dave Han, here, who welcomed us this evening to answer any questions on this.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is just a lease renewal with our Pinnacle Tower, which is in ransom township, so it's just a continuation of our lease.
Okay, does the board have any questions?
No, that was my question, if it was a renewal or if it was no, so.
No, it's not no, it's just a renewal.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion entering into a tower lease agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. 17-0282.
Maintenance and support agreement. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, hereby enters into a maintenance and support agreement with Tyler Technologies for the 911 CAD system in the amount of $126,150.50 for the year 2018, and Dave Han is here again to explain this agreement.
Commissioners, this is a maintenance and support agreement in addition to the agreement that we had with Tyler Technologies. So since we upgraded our CAD system, our maintenance agreement also gets, goes up, and we have additional services that we provide today, so that's why the amount went up approximately $24,000 a year for maintenance and support because of the different applications and the new applications that we provide.
What's that?
The original agreement was signed in 1992, so this is just an extension of that agreement.
This is on the new CAD system.
This is on, this is on the new CAD system. That's the reason that there's a, an increase in the, the amount. Last year, we paid $98,000.
I was just confused by that, because what I was seeing, I thought it was a name change, because they said it was New World and then Tyler.
Tyler, they also changed their name, yes ma'am. It used to be New World, now they're Tyler Technologies.
Okay, but this doesn't have anything to do with the New World that we use for payroll and-
Same company, but I don't, I don't think you, the finances, the financial part of it hasn't turned to Tyler yet. I don't know.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into a maintenance and support agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. 17-0283.
Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, hereby awards the following arts and culture mini-grants to the following community organizations. Borough of Dunmore, $500 for Home for Holidays Celebration. Spring Brook Township, $500 for An Afternoon with Santa. Taylor Borough, $500 for the Christmas ornament coloring contest. And West Evington Township, $500 for the Evington Senior Center art class. Mr. Calvey, how are you? Chris Calvey, our Acting Director of Arts and Culture, is here this evening.
Good evening, Commissioners, and Chief of Staff Wallace. Resolution number 170283, they're the municipal grants, they're the mini-grants that we've tried to bring arts and culture to the local municipalities, and those four that were mentioned, they're in the amount of $500 each.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Calvey?
No, I just have some comments on the one project in Taylor. I thought that was the nicest project, where they actually bring the whole entire community and they have the small prizes for the kids, and then, you know, they're trying to highlight their youth sports center, so I just thought it was a great project, and I just wanted to make sure that people, this is online, right? That's gonna be November 26 at the Taylor Community Center.
Did you go to Riverside?
I did.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Stop, but I still say it was the best project of all. It involves some, what's that?
Let's see, insinuating.
Just wondering.
I'm being biased, are you saying? I just thought it was a great project, but it brought everybody together, so it brought sports teams together, plus the kids, plus the elderly citizens, all in the same area, and I thought that was great.
It is, it is a nice, it's a beautiful event.
Yeah, I'm proud of them for the work they did. I'm, I'm proud of everybody with, how they involve their public, but that was just something special, I thought.
It is a special event. I'd like to make a motion awarding the arts and culture grants. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
This is a funding request for Scranton Tomorrow. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, hereby grants request by Scranton Tomorrow for $3,500 to support the New Year's Eve fireworks display, refunded by the Arts and Culture Department on December 31, 2017, and Mr. Calvey is here to answer any questions on this.
Resolution number 170293. It's in collaboration with the Scranton Tomorrow CAPA Creative and Performing Arts Academy of Northeastern Pennsylvania. The marketplace at Steamtown in Lackawanna County are working in collaboration with this year's spectacular Scranton New Year's Eve, and the event will be held Sunday, December 31, in the 200 block of Wyoming Avenue from 7:00 PM till 12:00 midnight. There'll be a tent outside, and there'll be activities in CAPA Theater hosting events for the whole family. Artists will be present, there'll possibly be horse-drawn carriage rides, vendors will be there to provide some food, and we're looking forward to an exciting evening with the fireworks at midnight.
Does the board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion granting the funding request for Scranton Tomorrow. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes, thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris, thank you.
17-0284.
This is accepting a quote from BAE Systems. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, is hereby accept a quote from BAE Systems for GXP Explorer for the Department of 911, first responders for coordinated grid software with GPS tracking at a cost of $111,000 for three years, and Mr. Kelly is gonna explain the agreement, and Mr. Kelly's gonna stay at the microphone for the next 17 agreements.
I'll try to be brief, and I apologize.
You are, Mr. Kelly.
This will be very quick.
We'll combine and we're-
If we can, that'd be great.
Which one's combined?
GXP, it's geospatial exploitation product, which is a mouthful. What it basically is, it's a Department of Defense software program they use in our armed forces that they're now making available to first responders and law enforcement individuals. Chief of Police, our SWAT team, Dave Han strongly endorsed this. The creative thing was how we're gonna pay for it, so what we did was we packaged together some funding. $50,000 would come from the forfeiture fund, from our district attorney's account, and then the balance of it would be about $31,000, $32,000 a piece. That will come out of PIMA, which we have a fund available, and the balance will come out of the Economic Development Fund.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Kelly?
No, I just thought it was really interesting, and I researched it. Did you look at all their flyers and what they could do? It's pretty cool.
Yeah, they do some-
That was really interesting.
They have GIS tracking, they go across municipalities, so for anything that happens across many municipalities, they'll coordinate all the police forces together, as well as if there's a lockdown in a school or a large building.
That's, yeah, that's-
They'll manage that, and Dave Han and his team will be on top like coordinated, so kudos really go to Dave and his team.
Make sure law enforcement's safe when they're going into danger, it's a big thing.
They map out the whole entire building, they know where all the air shafts are and all that.
No, it shows everything, I think it's great.
Think they could use it for reassessment?
You could use it for, you actually could, you could use it for anything, it could be used for anything.
We came to a demo on that up here, Commissioner O'Malley, when they showed us the buildings and what they're going to do.
Correct.
It was amazing.
I would see that.
I'd like to make a motion accepting a call for BAE Systems. Do I have a second?
Uh, second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
Now they've voted for it, I still have a question though. Three years, after three years, it won't be funded.
After three years, it's going to be the same amount, the renewed amount, and we're gonna have to be creative again. Dave anticipates having that money from PIMA. I'm hoping that our new DA will be as generous as he has in the past, and in the event that I don't have money in my budget due to austerity and other reasons, I would look for the district I would look for the district attorney to contribute the balance of the information.
That would make sense for their office to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Seventeen dash zero two eight five.
This is ratifying and authorizing the filing of Monroe Local County Local Share Service Grants. Be it resolved, whereas Lockawana County is interested in promoting economic development and revitalization within Lockawana County, whereas Lockawana County has submitted grant applications to Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through Monroe County Local Share Grant Program for the Friends of Connor Park, fourteen thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars for South Scranton Play Program Equipment, whereas Lockawana County hereby authorizes, as Chairman of Lockawana County signed and authorized all agreements, therefore be it resolved this day of November, if the Lockawana County Board of Commissioners hereby ratifies and authorizes submission of this application, Monroe County Local Share Grant on behalf of the above referenced agency.
Does the board have any questions?
Quick, what's your favorite grant program, Commissioner?
Yeah, well, I'm, Mark, can I have the camera for a minute? Mayor Connors, I cannot support the LSA funds. It has nothing to do with you, just so you're aware. That's all I want to say.
And again, we're only applying, we're not paying, we're just submitting it because we do a pass-through. They like the grants to come through a county. So again, it'd be up to the Commonwealth Finance Authority to fund that if they do desire.
Mr. Kelly, you might want to announce that we were successful on the LSA grant yesterday to get paving for, much-needed paving for Stoffer Park in Taylor, which we're very, very pleased about.
And that was a team effort of our engineer, Larry Lucasik, and our grant writer to submit an art grant through DCD to get funding. And it's a little bit over half a million dollars.
There's a strong example of one that really will benefit us tremendously.
Definitely so.
Those roads are in such need. Commissioner Cummings got a tour of it this past summer.
Hopefully it was a slow tour.
Three times.
It'll be road.
Well, no, I understand that there's uses for the public money, but that specific fund was supposed to go to homeowners, so.
I understand, but that park is, it's going to be good for the park there.
It's good for the roads, it's good for the park, but it's supposed to be good for the homeowners that are losing their houses. That's why I have to make sure I say that every time an LSA fund comes up, so that people don't think I don't want to take care of our seniors or I don't want to take care of our roads.
Sure, keep people in their homes.
I want to keep some people in their homes first and foremost. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion ratifying and authorizing the filing of an application for the Monroe County Local Share Account Grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
No.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
That's a savings for us. That's a big blacktop drop. Number seven, let's just.
Seventeen dash zero two eight six.
This is an agreement with United Neighborhood Centers of Northeastern Pennsylvania. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County hereby enters into an agreement with United Neighborhood Centers for Administration and Operation of a Transitional Assistance for Needy Families TANF Project Providing Theater Arts and Leadership Activities to thirty-five youths to be effective November fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Mr. Kelly.
Actually, the next four or five resolutions will deal with this transitional needy families.
This one, Commissioner Cummings wanted us to take separately. The other ones I was going to combine if she has no objections.
I do now because I read them and I'm confused by this.
I will, I will address each one individually.
Okay, thank you.
Not a problem.
Transitional needy families is a program that's administered through our Workforce Development Board. Money comes through federal and state government, it goes to the board. They pick all the projects, what they seem fit to meet the needs of the program. This is for very low, low and moderate income youth and teens. It's giving them programs, it's trying to show them that there's more than what their current reality is. And it's theater programs, it's a team leadership program, and we have several grants going through today regarding this.
Well, to start on this one, it's, it's supposed to be through workforce development, is what I'm seeing through all of these, the three of them. So what does workforce development have to do with the theater? Are they paying these people to be actors or how does that work? What is, what is, because you have to go through unemployment. Labor and Industry is providing some of this funding from what I can see in this packet.
Every year we get budget for Transitional Needy Families, one of our funding streams for the Workforce Development Board. As part of that, they look to focus on youth programs, young adult programs and needy families. This funding was specifically targeted towards youth and young adults. So therefore, the state tells us, as well as the federal government passing it through, saying we must help this category of people, people in this social class or economic class. So we're really mandated that we have to provide these services. And then the board tries to figure out, the Workforce Development Board, which is quite a large board, about thirty members plus, to develop what's the best way of doing this. So for example, on a youth program, there'll be twenty youth that they're actually working with with the theater program. So they're actually going to practice for a play and they're going to learn some presentation skills, acting skills, for a couple hours every week. The leadership and training with teens, there's going to be twenty-eight teens that will actually have an opportunity to understand a little bit about leadership qualities. And it's basically a hands-on program.
I still don't understand how that ties into workforce development and to the labor and industry grants. Because this whole entire contract is based on, you know, we have to get workers' comp, you have to have progress reports. I mean, the, you know, they're looking at labor, labor law through the United States Department of Labor and Industry. So I'm still at a loss as to how this youth theater program and leaders in training program has anything to do with employment. Who gets the funding? Like, where is this money going? Like, is it going to UNC to just?
Yes, it is. As a matter of fact.
Put a theater group together and does that theater group get paid to be there? Or are they paying for the supplies to have the theater program?
Yes, to all of the above. The total amount for just United Neighborhood Centers on these two programs is a little over forty-eight thousand dollars. And they'll get that. And there is a setup fee that's built into the payment schedule, which is included in the package, that lets them have some money for administration, for the staff to do it. A lot of the money directly goes to the youth.
Did we get a breakdown of these funds of how they, can I, did they do the same thing last year?
Yes. What we actually did is we wrote up a summary, a paragraph on all the different grants and we put, included the payment schedule as part of the work package.
That's not in here, that's not in my packet.
For example, the leadership in training, the team leadership program for the twenty-eight students of low-income youth, they're between fourteen and eighteen years old. It's a program that's conducted at the school for four times, four times per week for two hours. It revolves around setting and achieving academic, personal, family-related goals, taking part in a community service, educational field trips, and an experienced mentorship where they'll have mentors. So it's really one-on-one group sessions where they realize that there's, there's opportunity in life and exposure to different concepts that they may not be exposed to where they are now.
I still am not getting how that ties into workforce development. If it's a youth theater and, I mean, I would, like, if it was the CETA, like, if you came to me and said this is the CETA program where they actually get a paycheck and work throughout the county, that would be different, but.
One of the other grants that are coming up underneath this transition needy is basically CETA reinvented, but there's going to be youths earning a fifty per hour throughout the school weekend work.
Right, that I can understand because like, they're looking for workers' comp and they want paychecks and they want all the taxes. Like, we're not being held liable for the payroll taxes they are and.
They do it all, and that's why we outsourced it through the procurement process. They submitted bids to the workforce board. They have to keep the workmen's compensation, they need the liability insurance. We're more of a pass-through from the county, so we're doing more of the contract work to make sure that there's full transparency and everything is done bona fide. And then the actual contract manager, Kathy Girard, who's here, will oversee the contracts and make sure they perform as expected. They won't get paid until they show us that they perform.
Yeah, I saw that in here as well, that we have to, we can oversee it at any time and request all the information. And you're the one that's, that's in charge of overseeing that? So.
Well, I'm terrified of this. I have this for you. This.
Why don't you go to the microphone?
Come on over.
For general convenience here, okay?
She can give me that though.
This is.
Thank you.
Explains all of the projects for the TANF resolution.
Bless you.
Again, these, the TANF programs, it's not Department of Labor money, this is Department of Public Welfare money that comes down and it is specific. The regulations for this money is specific in that it has to be for youngsters between the ages of five and eighteen years of age. And as, as Mr. Kelly said, it is within a somewhat of a low to middle income group. What we had done in the past and what we did this year is we put a request for proposals out to the community to get projects so that we are serving youngsters across the community in a variety of projects. And I understand what you're saying about how does it tie into workforce development? But with the, when we looked at, and again, these were all approved by the Executive Committee of the Board following a review by a procurement, procurement review subcommittee of the Board who made recommendations to the Executive Committee. And you can see on what you have in front of you that the description is there, the recommendations that were made are in red, because the committee did question some of the things in the original proposals that came in. One of those were, some of the proposals wanted to provide incentives to youth. For instance, they would give them a twenty-five dollar incentive if they brought their paperwork in. I mean, we felt like that was really not anything that should be approved. And the state right now is looking at reducing the amount of incentives that are given out. We looked at the arts programs in the respect that a lot of schools are cutting back on their arts and culture programs. And these are youngsters that would probably never have an opportunity to be involved in anything like that at all. The people that we've seen come through, the youngsters that come through, they don't have the opportunity to go to dance classes or to singing classes or whatever. And it also would expose them to opportunities, career opportunities in the arts. And that's how, how the decision came to fund the arts programs.
Well, that one, the last statement you made would make sense if they were looking at careers in the arts. I would consider that as legitimate, but I guess I'm going to have to look and see. Could you just let me know what exactly they're working on? I mean, I can't vote on it because I don't, I don't know if it's what you're, what I'm thinking it is, so.
Yeah.
The leaders in training part of that piece.
Yeah.
They are going to do a lot of community service work. And they are going to expose girls to non-traditional jobs. And they're going to do girls in coding with some of the universities.
Kathy, could you speak at the microphone because you're televising this?
The leaders in training portion, they will be doing sixty hours of community service, working in different agencies. The girls will also be exposed to non-traditional jobs. And what they're trying to do is encourage more females going into programming. So they're going to be doing girls with coding and they're going to be doing that project with some of the university students, that they'll actually be learning more of the computer technology and programming. So that's an opportunity that a lot of these young ladies maybe would never think of as far as career opportunities. And if you're looking at high priority occupations, those particular jobs are probably paying a lot better than some of the traditional jobs that they might be looking at that they didn't feel they could aspire to achieve. So the leaders in training are building in career pieces into that portion of it. The, the arts part, the theater arts, they're learning a lot of soft skills. Basically, they're learning to be there on time, to show up, to complete assignments, to work as teams. So they are incorporating that into the whole end result or outcome, which will be a production. I don't know what topic they've picked for this year, but they will learn all the aspects, whether it's painting scenery, organizing, getting programs together, sewing costumes, organizational skills, so it would be the whole gamut. So that's how they're going to bring in some kind of work skills into that with just the end result being a production.
Building a production, so they're going to do the sets, they're going to do.
They're going to do from soup to nuts.
They're going to do the costumes, they're going to do everything, okay.
So they will be getting some skills throughout that.
Learn to work with other people.
Team building.
Team building.
So who, again, my question then becomes again, the money is funded to UNC, not the, not the actual kids that are doing this work?
The grant would probably go into staff that would be working with the youngsters, supplies that they need for the different activities. So it's not a wage being paid to them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? And I think one other thing that's very important about these is all of these activities have an educational component built in that not only would they get instruction in the arts, but they get assistance with their homework, they get tutoring if they need help by the staff at these organizations.
Tutoring for?
If they're having problems with arithmetic. And, and that's so noted. They get help with homework and their projects after school. So when they go, they get a little bit of that and then they get the arts. So there is some educational support built into these projects. Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into an agreement with United Neighborhood Centers of Northeast Pennsylvania. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
No.
Yes. Seventeen dash zero two eight seven.
This would be an agreement with Michael's Community Service Corporation, known as Better Tomorrows. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County enters into an agreement with Michael's Community Service Corporation, Better Tomorrows, for Administration and Operation of a Transitional Assistance for Needy Families Providing Out-of-School Educational Program for twenty Low-Income Youth from November fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. And the three individuals are here to explain this agreement to us again.
And this grant is basically a little bit of what Virginia was just talking about. It's individualized assistance at the school for needy children. It's going to be based in Village Park Apartments. So same concept, same thing we discussed before. It's going to be a little bit of drama, a little bit of production and individualized help.
This is, this is a lot of homework.
Yeah, this is educational assistance after school.
They will be hiring a teacher and an aide to work with the youngsters. Usually they don't get the support. A lot of times they will actually go to the homes and bring the kids back into the community center so that they can help them do their homework, whether it's their spelling, their arithmetic, so that they don't get far behind. They also support, supply them with a meal or a snack. And a lot of times the kids wouldn't get anything after school or in the evening if this wasn't supplied to them. This year they are also building in three field trips. One of them is.
Franklin Institute.
Franklin Institute. They're all educational pieces. They will have the cost of busing, lunches, shirts with their names, so when they take them out to different organizations, a lot of times this is the first and only time they will be doing hands-on with some of the science museums and some of the different activities in the Philadelphia area where they would never be exposed to any other way.
These are pass-through grants, there's not county money involved. We're not putting money into these programs, correct, George?
No, this is a special grant.
Special grant.
And this is Department of Welfare.
They're pass-throughs.
And these kids are all Village Park, if you're not aware, it's one of the lower socioeconomic areas.
Okay. Any questions? I'd like to make a motion entering into agreement with the Michael's Community Service Corporation, Better Tomorrow. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
No.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Seventeen dash zero two eight eight.
This one is with an agreement with Arbor Employment and Training for Res Care Work Services. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County hereby enters into an agreement with Arbor ENT Res Care Workforce Services for Administration and Operation of a Transitional Assistance for Needy Families Project Opportunities for twenty-six youths effective November fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Ms. Toronto, Ms. Girard and Mr. Kelly.
Commissioner, this was the program that you referred to earlier. This is kind of a reinvented CETA program where the kids will get eight fifty, eight dollars and fifty cents per hour. And they'll actually work in business environments, nonprofits, companies, nights and weekends.
Well, the contract is through a company from Louisville, Kentucky.
Well, Res Care, what we have is we had to do RFPs for the most qualified and the best prices in terms of services for the Workforce Development Board. Those are the contracts we did last year for youth, young adults, displaced workers. And we have two different firms that won those contracts. Now, the majority of people that they hired were all local Lockawana County residents that worked with SLHDA and worked within the career league for the last twenty years to speak, some a little bit less. So it's basically an out-of-town provider using local people.
So are you saying for twenty years we've had the same contract?
Oh, for about thirty years we had SLHDA doing all the work, procurement and fiscal management, which the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act required us to have a segregation of duty. The Board of Commissions are responsible for all the money. If anything happens, we're on the hook and the county has to pay it back. So it was decided to bring it into the county for financial oversight. And that's our role today is to make sure that contracts are done, the right bidding processes are happening, the right internal controls and transparency is there.
Maybe I have a misunderstanding of this reinvented CETA program, because when, I thought it was worked out through the state and we just did the money through, through the county to send them to like the courthouse and whatever, like the school districts that we have. And we actually issued that paycheck, that's what I remember it being, but, I mean, I don't, I could be wrong. Are you saying these people actually take the money and provide the paychecks?
Yes, to the payroll services of the children.
And we don't do the paychecks or anything like that, so they're providing that? It's kind of like, okay, so the time slips and everything like that go to them? Do they do?
They have case managers, project managers. And then Kathy Girard, Mr. Girard's job is to oversee the contracts. We have a monitor that'll watch all the files to make sure that it's done to the letter of the law. So there are checks and balances.
The way this contract is, most of the youngsters that will be involved in the activity[1671.31] The way this contract is, most of the youngsters that will be involved in the activity are youngsters that have no work experience. So, what they will do is they will bring them in and do some soft skills with them. They will do some career exploration with them. And then, they will try to get in anywhere between 25 and 100 hours of work experience. They'll pay them $8.50 an hour. They will try to match them with their interests, whether it's the children's library, whether it's a community activity where they can get the hours in, whether it's a youth center where they can assist with painting, if it's a food pantry. All of this will be dependent on the availability of the hours of the youngster and the facility, keeping in mind that we're keeping the kids at their academic levels, that they would not suffer because they're going to be working for the first time. But the case managers will work with them to kind of introduce them to the world of work. A lot of these youngsters then work in our summer program, which would be the traditional CETA program.
Okay, what's the grant on this one? This is...
And both of you ladies worked the CETA program back in the day.
That's how we started.
Comprehensive Employment Training Act.
Yeah.
I worked through it.
Yeah, I did too. That's why I'm saying, I mean, I am for a CETA-type program, but how much money is going through here? A hundred...
Fifty thousand.
What's the grant on this?
Fifty thousand.
Grant total is what, George?
Fifty. Five zero.
Fifty, fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, Commissioner.
That's not a small, is it? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into agreement with Arbor Employment and Training for Res Care Workforce Services. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terry, yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummins? Yes.
Commissioner Mallory?
Yes. Seventeen dash zero two eight nine.
This agreement is with the Scranton Cultural Center at Masonic Temple. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lockawanna County enters into an agreement with Scranton Cultural Center for administration and operation of a transitional assistance for needy family project, providing musical theater, performance arts, and instruct, and intensive instruction for 12 youths effective November 15th of 2017, and ending on June 30th of 2018. Ms. Gerard, Ms. Terrell, and Mr. Kelly.
Very similar to the first performing arts grant that we talked about. It'll do two live productions as well.
So, Scranton Cultural Center does this, and they get an allotment of $20,000?
Yes.
Now, what's that, that pays for the stagehands, that pays for everything that goes on?
Materials to produce the production. And there is a little bit of administration. That's small.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion entering into agreement with Scranton Cultural Center and Masonic Temple. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terry, yes.
No.
Commissioner Mallory?
Yes. Seventeen dash zero two nine zero.
This is in agreement with Career Technology Center of Lockawanna County. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners hereby enters into an agreement with Career Technology Center of Lockawanna County for the administration, operation of a strategic innovation, otherwise known as a SIG grant, providing short-term classroom activities addressing occupational pathways within the healthcare sector for 30 to 40 individuals, effective November 15th of 2017, and ending on June 30th of 2018. And our team is here to explain this one.
Again, this goes through the Workforce Development Board. It's a different program from transitional needy families. This was a grant, competitive grant, that was applied for by this Workforce Development Board in addition with other boards, and they gave us money to conduct these type of programs. We asked for proposals. This proposal came in, the board accepted it from the Workforce Development Board. 30 to 40 students, and they're going to get exposed to all different types of healthcare programs. We're going to have people from the field come in and actually address the students so they get a really good understanding of potential careers for them.
This particular is a strategic innovation grant, and the reason that we went in for this particular grant is this was available at the time when Geisinger had in the paper where they were hiring 200 and some people, and they were especially addressing the lack of skill sets and the lack of people with the training to fill some of the positions, whether they were direct healthcare, whether they were IT, dietary, transporter, LPN, RN, ultrasound, the whole gamut that we certainly were lacking. We had positions, we didn't have enough people with skills training. So, the grant that we did put in for that was approved was a 30-hour preliminary exposure to different occupations, CPR training, OSHA training, kind of clearances, backgrounds, what people would need to get jobs in the health field. Doing field trips, talking to educational facilities to find out what training there is, how much it costs, and what they can do. The other components to this particular program would be that there is money available to pay for training, to put them into on-job training where we're reimbursing an employer 50% to put people into work experience. So, this was just the first component, and we did have to go out and bid for this. It's important to note at this, there is no income requirement for this particular project. Anybody that's interested has access to the funds to get the training, to start the preliminary, and then move through training, on-the-job training, internships, job shadowing, all of that, which we were very fortunate, because a lot of times, it's just for low income, and that other middle class seems still missed out sometimes. So, this is a nice grant, and we're trying to get it out to the community, that people know, the job seekers, that there's opportunity available, and individuals that are working part-time or underemployed certainly can take advantage of this grant. So, this is one important piece of it.
Yeah, I wish that more money had gone into this one.
We did ask for more money and got cut.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion entering into an agreement with Career Technology Center of Lockawanna County. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terry, yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummins? Yes.
Yes. Seventeen dash zero two nine one.
This agreement is with Lockawanna College. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lockawanna County hereby enters into an agreement with Lockawanna College for administration and operation of a business education partnership, providing career awareness, pathways, information to 69th through 12th grade students from Scranton, West Scranton, Carbondale, and Riverside High School.
What this grant is, it's the college experience, freshman experience 101 Lockawanna County. It allows these youth to get one credit and experience what college is all about, and hopefully encourage them, give them an opportunity to go to college if they so desire to do that. It's a subsidy of about $100 per student into the classes. So, we're doing a subsidy for the tuition that would cost for this program.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion entering into agreement with Lockawanna College. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terry, yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Mallory?
Yes. Seventeen dash zero two nine four.
Commissioner, with your permission, seventeen dash zero two nine four, two nine five, two nine six, two nine seven are all related resolutions, and I was going to combine them if you'd like to save us some time. Authorizing the readoption and implementation of plans and policies, code of ethics, excessive force policy, and anti-displacement policy, an MBE policy, designating a fair housing officer, designating a Section 504 coordinator and compliance officer, and designating a Section III compliance officer. Whereas...
Can I just ask one question before you do that?
Sure.
Are all these positions that are currently in effect, or are all these new positions that have to be created? That was my question.
There's two actual positions where we're assigning someone new. For example, the discrimination, we're going to put the deputy director of HR in that program. So, it's just something where they're going to be identified as the formal person who's responsible to ensure that we follow these policies.
He's going to meet the requirements of the law?
Excuse me?
Meet the requirements of the law, Mr. Kelly?
Yes. This is a requirement for any program that receives federal funding, which is millions of dollars for Lockawanna County. We don't have these policies. They will not give us the money.
Got it.
I'm going to formally reread the one resolution and combine them, okay?
That'd be great. That'd be awesome.
Whereas, it's a public policy of the County of Lockawanna to promote the excessive force policy, anti-displacement federal programs receiving these funds. Whereas, Lockawanna County Department of Economic Development has adopted this policy. Whereas, in accordance with Community Development Lock Grant Program regulations, the county has passed a fair housing resolution on April 27th, 1986, and amended, whereas said resolutions provide the county shall assist all persons who have been discriminated against because of race, color, religion, ancestry, national origin, handicap, disability, or familial status. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawanna County approves and accepts the designation also of a responsible employer under Section 504 plan. Whereas, Lockawanna County must comply with Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, implementing regulations and amendments. Will approve and accept the readoptions of grievance procedures, public notification process, required employment practices, policies, and transitional facilities. And whereas, designating a Section III compliance officer by the United States Congress passed Section III of the Housing and Urban Development Act of 1968, which was amended. Whereas, Part 135 of Section 33 is to establish the standards and procedures. Whereas, the Lockawanna County Department of Economic and Community Development has developed these plans to address these. Now, therefore, be resolved, County of Lockawanna County Commissioners adopts all of these policy resolutions as presented.
Okay. I'd like to make the motion for seventeen dash zero two nine four, seventeen dash zero two nine five, seventeen dash zero two nine six, and seventeen dash zero two nine seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terry, yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Mallory?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Ginny.
Thanks, Trish.
Thanks for all your explanations.
Seventeen dash zero two nine nine.
Commissioners, this is a motion to extend the inmate medical provider for comprehensive health services to Correctional Care Incorporated for an additional 30 days to now expire on January 14th, 2018, after receiving approval of the prison board. And Commissioners, I was prepared to explain this to you. This was an extension that was recommended by the prison board at our meeting today at 12 o'clock. This would allow the committee and the prison board an additional 30 days to continue to review and evaluate the medical request for proposals at the Lockawanna County Prison, and it was recommended unanimously by the members of the prison board that we needed the 30 additional days. And the members of the committee were also reviewing these detailed proposals.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion to extend the inmate medical provider in comprehensive health service, Correctional Care, Inc., an additional 30 days now expired January 14th, 2018, and receiving the approval of the prison board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terry, yes.
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 Yes. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board.
Nothing personal, so you have to excuse me for a little bit. You go right ahead. He asked me to bring bells anymore, Bob, and ring them after 12 minutes.
Oh, we're almost ready for our milk and cookies, anyway. Just one thing I'd like to bring to mention of Kent Santorelli. He's a very close friend of mine for many, many, many years, and tragically was killed in a car accident. And just like people to know that we really lost a real good friend and an ally to this community, and he'll be missed. On your motion here on the two nine nine, I think that the prison board or the commissioners, when you add somebody new, hopefully, it's not going to be Zalogo and Correctional Care that we're back to where we were, is the rush in the judgment, you know, cover all the bases and learn from the mistakes that have been made over the years with the correctional care and the issues that have arisen from there. And put somebody capable, and we won't have these problems in the future. But their inmates are not, they're still human beings, and they deserve everything that they should have. I will be going to Baltimore tomorrow night, and I'll be presenting the certificate of... I can't even remember what it was that you gave me, Pat, on the Spirit Ride.
Recognition.
Recognition. I'll be presenting that to the American Tollman Association tomorrow night in Baltimore, along with the plaque from the mayor with the key to the city of Scranton. The mayor's the only one out of all the cities that the Spirit Ride. And what the Spirit Ride is, it's bringing awareness to all first responders and the moveover law. And we were happy to have been a part of it. We're appreciative that we brought it to downtown Scranton in front of the Lockawanna County Courthouse, and it was seen nationally throughout the whole country and all different networks. So, I'll be presenting that boat tomorrow, and they'll both be going into the museum with the American Tollman Association. So, I just wanted to bring that out, that I'm proud to be able to do that and represent our community. On the school board, I think we all need to get on board here and pay attention to what's going on with them. There's been a lot of games, a lot of game playing over there, and they're actually putting this whole community in jeopardy, in financial distress. We can't continue to keep digging in our pockets to pay a school board that doesn't know where they're putting their money or what they're doing with it, and squandered it, and we're being assessed and buried with it. And look at your tax bill, what it's causing to support what they're doing. You know, we all have to work for a real hard living, not only to support ourselves, now we've got to keep supporting them, and they want more and they want to give less. Let's go back to the old way we used to teach kids. It was a different way. Teachers worked, and they didn't complain, and they put in the hours and the time. I have a great deal of respect for teachers. I just don't respect people who want to put us to the mat and keep draining our funds and saying we want more. So, we all need to get behind it. On the reassessment, which has been a major issue, I think cool heads need to prevail. I don't think we need to sit in a courtroom as Mr. Gahan from the city council now wants to do and force everything in. Now, he comes on like a bully in a china shop and thinks he's going to force the commissioners to do it, but he didn't say a word about it prior to the election with the city councils.
Mr. Gahan didn't say that. That wasn't Gahan.
Yeah, Gahan.
Gahan said no.
Pardon?
Okay, well, it's all through the city council that they want to force the commissioners, the whole group, but he was kind of a lead there with Evans and the other. And I went through these council meetings, so I still think they need to sit back because they've allowed a lot of things in this city to go haywire. They all signed on the recovery plan, allowed the sewer authority to be sold, the parking garages, they haven't said a thing about the mall and the assessments there and all the other issues, the parking spaces, we no longer have in the city, yet we paid almost $5 million bucks to the mall to have 500 parking spaces. And now, we're paying $10 on St. Patrick's Day. So, a lot of issues need to be looked at. I think the commissioners, now you start overseeing what's going on in the city of Scranton, because it is the city of Scranton, and it has a lot of effect every aligning community. On the reassessment, I think maybe we have to look at other options. You know, you can't have somebody say your house is worth this, and another person who's saying, well, we're taking based on appraisal somewhere else, and everybody has an opinion on it. Maybe we need a neutral board set up seven days a week where you take a block by block and bring everybody in and show them what their house is worth. They could argue it right then and there, because even if you do the reassessment, you're still going to be able to go appeal your assessment. So, we're not gaining a bloody thing. We're right back where we started from. So, we need to find a simpler method of doing what we're doing and not just have somebody come in and say, look, a house sold for $200,000. Well, now, you're worth $200,000, when your house is only worth $50,000. I know how the game was played. You saw what I did with the Holy Cross Church and Hall. I paid $35,000 to buy it. I owe $50,000 in taxes because of the unfair assessment, because I wouldn't turn the hall over to one of the judges who had a deed that he had in his drawer for $2. I don't play those games, and I don't take to being blackmailed and pushed around and bullied. I own the hall, and I own the church, and I'll deal with what I have to deal with there sooner or later. Would have already been developed, but because of what's going on now with the taxing and everything else, I put it all on a back burner. And it was not something I wanted to do. I think we need to base the exception on facts, not on somebody's assumption that it's worth this or worth that. We need a fair way to do it, and I've been involved in reassessments already on other properties in Monroe County and in Luzerne County that I have, and it's a joke. Be very upfront with you about it. It's a bloody joke. Somebody who's got a lot of money is getting what they want, and the poor guy who can't defend himself in fight is getting hammered into the ground, and then they're getting buried with the school tax. So, there are a lot of issues. And the AG taking all our records, and I say our records, we're all in this community. They came in with their search warrants, they wiped us all out. They're costing us a lot more money, because people now have no idea what they're looking for or where they're going, because they took all the records. And they've kind of put us at a disadvantage to run our community like it should be ran. I think when they came in, they should have been specific with their search warrant, what they were looking and where they were going. What they did here, they've taken a blanket fishing expedition, hoping they find something else that they have no idea about, and I don't think they should be in that direction. I've been there, I've been through this with them in the past, and our receivables were held up, money was lost, because they don't care what they do, they could just do what they want to do, because they're in that power to do it. And I think we have to stand our ground and get our records back. Let them take what they want, that's their job to do, and if something is illegal, and there was something in a department that was illegal, that's where they should have been specifically into that department, not try and wipe out the whole county and think they're going to find something else, which is a joke. They get a paycheck, but they're costing us a heck of a lot more money now to try and have you run our county, and it's just unfair to the people in this community. If you get them, look at them, and send them back so our people could do their job. PTSD, and Pat Lauren and Jerry appreciate the fact that when I brought Dr. Lindenfeld up here, we spent over a couple hours, I don't know how your ear handled so long on the phone, Lauren, but we moved forward in a direction that's not being done anywhere in this country, to the form that we did. And he was tested very well by the people that were in the meeting that day from the different departments. They threw anything and everything at him, what they couldn't find, they went out and looked for even more to challenge his credentials, and he stood the ground, stood the test.[1794.51] What we're looking for now is funding to move this forward, to get the medical college involved for the brain mapping, the other things we need to do, get volunteers in here, because remember PTSD isn't only about our military, it's about our first responders, it's about everyone in this room that'll witness something and wind up with PTSD. It's an epidemic, and it's been ignored a long time. People are putting guns at their head, taking drugs, killing themselves on a daily basis, especially in our military, and people who have maybe a divorce or a tragedy at home and can't deal with it. What we have here now is the opportunity to save these lives. And the fact that I found Dr. Lindenfeld in Florida was after an article was written on me about Iwo Jima, they did a story about him, and I got ahold of him. And we met with him, and I spent a lot of time with him, and that's why I brought him here twice already. Once was over Geno Merly, and nothing came out of that, but I believe we're moving forward here, and I'm asking you to really consider putting funding together for a PTSD study. And Dr. Lindenfeld, I'm sure could come up with what amount he needs to get going here, but I don't want to keep talking about it. I really want to see it happen, and you guys have been on board to do it, and I think you're the ones to make it happen. Thank you, and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Commissioner Cummings.
I wish that there was more than Bob here to see this great facility because it's beautiful here. I don't know if everyone has been here before or any newcomers are here, but what a great building.
Speak up.
Yeah, they can't hear me?
No.
Sorry, John. I thought I had a big enough mouth, but I guess I don't. That one's on. Can you hear me okay?
Everything's fine.
Okay. There were some articles in the Scranton Times over the past week that I wanted to talk about, but first I wanted to say congratulations to the citizens for using their voice and proving to those naysayers out there that they actually do understand what a sentence says when they read it, because the state had a question on the ballot that the voters overwhelmingly said yes to. They completely understood that that was to try and help eliminate property taxes, and they answered no overwhelmingly to reassessment. So they completely understood that, yes, their taxes will be affected because of reassessment. And anybody that claims that it won't is just lying, because first of all, first and foremost, the first tax that has to be assessed to the people is the money to return for the loan that we have to take out to pay for it. So yes, there would be a tax increase to pay for that, period, and that has to be paid back in ten years. Whether they'd be taxed because of changes in their property assessment, that's, you know, that's taking a chance, can go, what, fifty-fifty either way, who knows? But because it's been so long that one's been done, everybody realizes that any upgrades to their properties that were done are most certainly going to be taxed at a higher rate. What people generally, when I was going around talking to the general public in regards to reassessment, they did not realize was that when you sell your house, your home does not automatically get reassessed, but a lot of people think that it does. Well, in fact, it does not. That would be referred to as a spot assessment, which is illegal, and that's part of the property tax law that is ridiculous, as far as I'm concerned, because maybe if they actually changed the wording in that to allow for reassessment to be done on sale or transfer through attrition, properties would become normalized after so long without hurting those that own their properties for a longer length of time. Otherwise, we just need a whole new law, and that's basically where I was going with that. I did, and I think that all the commissioners sitting up here recognize that eventually we were going to be hit with some type of a lawsuit if we didn't do something, and I believe that that was the whole purpose in my mind of agreeing to Commissioner O'Malley's suggestion of putting it on the ballot. And I didn't want, based on some of the conversations I had with the solicitors, I did not want to come out and say that prior to the vote because it was considered whatever. You guys, your legalese know why, I don't, but, you know, the last thing I want to see is our county be hit with a lawsuit. And, you know, I, it's been quiet regarding lawsuits for our county in regards to, you know, people that were fired. That was one of the arrangements that I had requested, that there would be no political firings in our administration, which there haven't been no political firings. That usually happens when a change of administration comes through. In speaking to my solicitor and our office, our, Rick, is he here from our insurance office?
John is here.
Rick, can you let the public know about how our rates have changed because of the fact that there has been no, we were at, what, one fifty for lawsuits? Now we're down to a hundred thousand, is that right?
Deductible.
The deductible?
Yeah, the deductible that we had, because of many of the cases that were adjudicated and either settled or went to mediation or trial, there were, I believe, at least twenty-two cases in the first eight years that I've been the risk manager at the county. In the last two years, we have not had any political firing cases. We've had a couple of cases that are testing the FMLA provisions of the law in terms of whether there's FMLA abuse by an employee and whether that's an employment-related action. But we have not had in the last two years any political firing cases, and that has been able to help us, one, stabilize our premium and reduce our per claim deductible going forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, yeah, so that's the one result of our decisions in this administration that I am extremely proud of and was glad to hear that today. So any type of lawsuits that are going to affect our county, I'm really, I don't want that to happen. I did, because of my feelings on that, I did go to the Scranton City Council meeting. Did you guys see the Scranton City Council meeting that I attended?
Did a great job.
Did you see how nice I was to those guys?
Very professional, did a great job, didn't I?
I was very, very nice to these gentlemen. I really was, and that's not normal.
You thought I wasn't new, weren't you?
I know. I was very pleasant, and I asked very nicely to cooperate with the county prior to a lawsuit being, you know, put up on the table by the council. And, you know, I am sincere in that. I really want to make sure that we work together, and I asked them to work with the county, and hopefully other municipalities would work with us to lobby our state representatives to finally change a broken property tax law. It needs to be fixed. It just does. Reassessment's not going to cure the ills of Scranton or any other municipality at this point. And with my very kind and generous statements that I made to Scranton City Council, I had to leave because I was basically down a couple days last week. I wasn't feeling well, and I got out of my pajamas, I even got out of my pajamas and went into Scranton City Council so that I could be very nice and kind to those gentlemen who, after I left, proceeded to, of course, come right after me without any kindness or quotes that would, you know, be appreciative that I came in there to ask them so kindly for their cooperation with the county and other municipalities. So one of the statements that was made was by Councilman Pat Rogan, who always has a statement to make, apparently. And he feels that reassessment is to blame for the one lawsuit that they have on the five-eleven law. Now, I understand why he thinks this, because I originally thought that if their reassessment was completed, that the overall value of Scranton would absolutely increase, and a percentage of that increase is what determined that they overtaxed their citizens. However, that is not the case, and in speaking further with some more people that are more in tune to the law in regards to the five-eleven law, it's based on the percent of market value, which is the step rate. John Foley, I tried to get you, but that was the reason I called you today. So that, in fact, will not help the city of Scranton, and if my solicitor would like to expound on that to confirm what I'm saying, I would appreciate it.
From what I understand.
Hang on, you need a microphone.
Then what, Andy?
Andy.
From what I understand, there had been some disidea going around, and the subject was discussed, that if there was a reassessment, because certain taxes are measured by a percentage of the assessed value, that obviously a reassessment would make higher assessed value, so therefore what are illegal taxes today could become legal taxes.
Correct.
That's not true.
Right.
That was discussed. I understand several, at least one person from the Times is well aware of that, although I'm not sure it has been reported that way, but be that as it may, the lawsuit that was filed on the issue cites the statute, which indicates it's measured by the market value. If the county maintains the market value, then you use the county market value. If the county does not, which most counties don't, then you use the market value determined by the state, which you can just look up on your computer. So the percentage is against the market value. So doing a reassessment will not have any effect whatsoever on correcting the five-eleven error. What needs to be done on the five-eleven error is cut the spending.
That's right.
And as a future resident of Scranton, I wish they would.
Thank you, John. Which brings me.
By the way, that's been litigated twice so far, so for them to, for someone to say that we're aware of this and, you know, we're taking an appeal on it, I don't know how they could truthfully say that, because the judge has already determined that, and the complaint, which I have in front of me, is very specific. I believe they admitted it in the pleadings. So how, well, be that as it may, but to say that it would correct that is not true. It's not true at all.
So then we're left with, and that is to fix this law, and I'm still standing firm on that. We need to, you know, fix this property tax law, and that's where I will continue to stay. And, you know, we're always looking at cutting spending, and this year we've been really, I mean, it's been tough. It's been a rough, it's been a rough year on the budget. You know, we're trying to cut everything, and, you know, maybe they should just start doing that in Scranton. I just don't know what else to say to Scranton City Council, and if I say any more, they'll be fighting with me over the Scranton Times, so I'm just going to stop there. In regards to the AG records, I mean, Scranton Times never called me for a comment on that. I didn't. I'm assuming the attorneys are doing what they need to do, so I'm not going to question what, whatever the attorneys are doing.
The attorneys, yes.
You know, that's their job. I'm going to say I trust the way they're handling it. PTSD, Bob, you're right. I mean, as a nurse, I've seen it, and I know it affects everyone, and I would love to help you with funding that study, but as you just heard, we've been cutting everywhere. I mean, it's just, we're really, really trying to make sure that we aren't an administration that's going to raise taxes on our residents, and, you know, we're just going to continue to do that, so I can't, I can't commit to that to you for that reason. But I appreciate you bringing it up. And the library, in the Scranton Times, they had printed, and Kyle, if you could just correct this in your paper, I would appreciate it, it stated that we, they wanted to get their designated funds back, but that money is not designated at any time regardless. That money, they have to apply for every year, and it's not a guarantee that any of those are going to be approved, regardless of whether it's the Scranton Cultural Center, the library, or the museum.
Everheart.
So those aren't designated funds to those specific buildings. They're, they have to request that to be provided to them, and we have to vote on whether we're going to give it to them. So for that, you know, I would just correct your paper on that, and I'm not sure where you got that designated from, because it's not. It's not designated money for them ever, and that could be changed at any time. I also want to give my sincere condolences to the family of Mr. Santorelli and to Commissioner O'Malley, and I'm really sorry for your loss. And, you know, I just, I hope that they have a lot of prayers, thoughts and prayers. I know that they have a lot of thoughts and prayers coming from me and others to help them through this very difficult time. And I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and hope you stay safe. Thanks.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Bob, to your issue, I think, again, we, the county doesn't have a lot of money, but I think there are ways we may be able to look for monies for you. Moses Foundation, all health-related, largest foundation in northeastern Pennsylvania, there, through some different things, maybe we can continue and try to find some money to be able to do that. I think that's an important thing. As far as the reassessment, the problem with this is the misunderstanding of it. The Commonwealth referendum was not stricken down by a court. It was well-worded and well-understood. Ours, on the other hand, was not. It was designed to fail. It was stricken down by the court, saying it's illegal. It was stricken down by an appellate court. Therefore, it's not a binding or legal or referendum of any sort. If we had spent the time and the money to educate the people, when a company comes in, Pennsylvania, there are only two companies that actually do it. In other states, there are many. There are ten, fifteen companies that do it. Pennsylvania, there's only two because Pennsylvania's not required to reassess. As far as Commissioner Cummings' remarks about the state law, she's correct, but we have no control over that. This is, this is what we have to do. We have no control over what the state does. It'd be very nice if they did fix it, and the system is broken, there's no question, but we have no control over that. We have to work with what we have, with the system that we have in place. It's been fifty years since we reassessed. When a company does come in, they say they would, they spend up to nine months educating the people of how the reassessment works and what kind of effect it will have on them. We spent a month, two months, twenty thousand dollars doing it. They spent much more money on it. We don't know the actual cost. Much of that information from the previous one is still current and available, and talked with John Foley about that. He says much of it is still there, and it is, it would be viable. The pictometry thing that we all voted to put, to do, to help with the EMS system, would be helpful in doing a reassessment. There's no question about that. So that cut would cut down on the cost of it. It's, when you have the Chamber of Commerce, the Realtors Association, every business community member saying, this is important that you do do it because it hurts us economically through our economic development, we can't, and I understand and I agree with, I don't want to tax anyone out of their home or take more taxes, but we have to build our economic, we have to build our base. We can't continue to do what we've been doing. We've been doing the same thing. We're one of two counties that haven't done it in the last fifty years. It's, again, to use that as an example, as to, you know, the people did understand. We were told by two courts and a language expert at a trial, saying, no, this is not a question that is easily understandable. How many people here know what a hundred percent predetermined ratio means? Not too many, okay? And there was no reason for that term to be used in there either. It could have been a fifty percent predetermined ratio. It could have been a 50% predetermined ratio, which would affect what Commissioner Cummings was concerned about, other taxing bodies being able to raise their taxes by that. It can be 35%. So to use the 100% predetermined ratio would scare some communities, there's no question about it. It's absolutely necessary that we, in order to grow as a community, as a county, reassess. It's that simple. That's all I have.
On Election Day, I wasn't really going to get into this, but I'll talk about it now. We had the two questions, Commonwealth question, we had our question on reassessment.
The Commonwealth question wasn't stricken down.
One, one.
Apples and oranges.
Sorry, whatever. We had a ballot, on one side of your ballot, you had everybody that's running for public office, you had to fill in each and every one of those little circles. But then you had to turn it back over, and you had to find the other questions, which the people did. They weren't dumb. Our courts maybe wanted to let people think that they weren't smart enough to be able to figure this out, they figured out both questions loud and clear. And I'm very sorry that the Commonwealth courts did not overturn it, but the people came out the next day, and they voted the way that they felt. They voted on behalf of their families, and that's what I wanted to hear. Lorraine was against reassessment, Commissioner O'Terriani was for reassessment. I stayed in the middle, because I wanted to hear what their opinion was. And whether the courts, or the two people who came forward to ask the courts to look into this, or the Commonwealth courts struck this down, the people came out the next day, and they voted. They looked for it, they filled in that little circle, and they made it be known that they weren't for reassessment.
Commissioner O'Malley, I apologize for interrupting you, but I'd also like to point out to you that we did an analysis on it. The more people voted on the county question on reassessment than any question on the entire ballot, from the state question, the retentions, or anything else, over 80% of the people flipped that paper over, they knew they were looking for it, and they voted on it. We ran the numbers on it. Like, it wasn't an easy thing to do, like, most people, when they go in to vote, they're nervous, and they're in a hurry. And I would love for them to do a test, test someone's blood pressure an hour before they go and vote, and then two minutes after they walk out of the, when they walk out of the voting booth. I really mean it, I'd love to see the difference. But they did, they turned that ballot over, they looked for the question, and they voted on behalf of their family. And that's what the Board of Commissioners wanted to have done, we wanted to have done, we wanted to gauge the people, whether it was stricken down, whether it wasn't supposed to be, that wasn't legal. We wanted to know what the people's thoughts were. They made it be known, no matter what. I'd like to thank all of our directors for coming out, our deputy directors, all of our staff for coming out. This is our last of four on-the-board road meetings, which really matter. Commissioner Cummings came up with this when we first came in the office in January of 2015, and I'll tell you, or 2016, and it really gives everybody an opportunity throughout Lackawanna County to come out and voice their opinion, plus we have all of our budget meetings on the road, so people can absolutely get out to see us and ask all their questions. And we have all of our directors here, and what's really cool about it, is that they ask for Parks and Recreation, Office of Economic Community Development, Arts, you name it, we have every department here. So if anyone was here, questions are answered, immediately. You can go to a city council meeting, you might not get the answers, the answer immediately. We have them right here, right on the spot. And that was the big thing with us, with our four meetings, to make sure all of our directors and deputy directors came out, so the answers could be had right on the spot. So I'd like to thank everyone for coming out this evening, I know it's tough at set night, but thank you for being here. We have a big month coming up. We have the Santa Parade this coming Saturday, November 18th, 9:00 a.m., it steps off in downtown Scranton, come on out, lots of fun for the children. I'd like to again thank Dave Hahn and all of our law enforcement that have the active shooter seminar up here. I hate to say that we had to have that, but we are going to have another one of those active shooter seminars, because I want to get maybe more central into downtown Scranton for more people to come out, because this is a scary situation, and we want to make sure that our people, our citizens are as safe as they possibly can be. Thursday, November 30th, at the courthouse, we're going to have our tree lighting, great night, it's going to be at 6:00 p.m., hot chocolate, cookies, and that's going to be all donated by Unico National and LaFest Italiana Committee, and it's just a great night to come out, and the Catholic Choral Society will be there to do a little bit of singing, so it'll be really, really nice, and the tree lighting at the end. Lackawanna County Government Center is going to be having the Globe Tree Lighting, 5:00 p.m. on December 1st, which happens to be First Friday. For those of you who weren't able to make it last year, approximately 15,000 people were in downtown Scranton between Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, having a great time, remembering the old times in downtown Scranton, and enjoying the feeling of going into the Globe Store and the marketplace. This is Lackawanna County investing in our future, Wits Grant Made at the Marketplace. This is going to be on, time is going to be December 1st, 5:00 to 9:00, December 2nd, 11:00 to 7:00, and December 3rd, 11:00 to 4:00 p.m. Also, this past weekend, had an opportunity to go up to Dummore, this is a project through George, our community reinvest grants. We gave a large amount of money to Dummore and the Rotary Club to be able to set up a beautiful monument dedicated to 262 citizens, our servicemen that lost their lives during World War I. There's a lot of people there that were there to see that, their family members, maybe it was a great uncle, or cousin, or something, that they were identified, and that they were known, that they were heroes, and they died in behalf of Lackawanna County. Also, this coming year, next weekend, there's going to be the Santa Train, which is going to be on December 2nd, starts at Carbondale down to Scranton, it stops at all the municipalities along the way, Santa Claus comes out, candy canes, come see the kids, pitchers, it's a great day for all the kids. And last but not least, that was my cousin that Bob Bowles was talking about, that's my wife's cousin, and he's my cousin too, Kent Santorelli, great businessman in Jessup and Peckville, and he's from Santorelli and Sons, and it's a great loss to his family, his three little girls, and his family and the community is going to miss him deeply, and he was just, he was just a really great man, and a lot of people are going to be sad. He's going to be deeply missed. At this time, I'd just like to wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Roll call.
Commissioner Cummings? Yes. Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening, thank you.